Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, May 19, 2020, and we are broadcasting this workshop this time on Kent TV 21. So, thank you to everyone joining us, also on Facebook. So, welcome if you are joining us for the workshop. We are going to be having a budget presentation. So, I would like to introduce Paula Painter to get that started for us.
Good evening, Council President Troutner, council members, Madam Mayor, and all of you who have joined us tonight. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about the 2020 budget and the impacts that that budget is facing due to the COVID-19. I have put my PowerPoint up on the screen. I'm hoping everyone can see it now.
It looks great. Thank you, Paula.
Great, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Weiss.
I just wondered how Paula want us to ask questions? She want us to wait? Or we get throughout the time? Or how does she want us to address any question we may have?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, I'm comfortable if you want to ask questions as we go along. We'll have 20 slides to go through, so we'll want to keep that in mind just to make sure that we keep this moving at a good pace so we can get through all of the slides by the end of this period.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If you have a question, go ahead and raise your hand. If you have a question about that particular side, and we can kind of watch to make sure we don't go too far ahead.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so, as you guys recall, back on April 14, I came to a committee of the whole meeting and spoke to you about some potential revenue loss due to the impacts of COVID-19. And at that presentation, I focused a lot of my time on the general fund. However, there are other funds that are impacted as well, and we'll get into what those funds are and kind of how that all rolls together as we walk through this presentation here today. But since that original presentation that I shared with you, we went back and department directors began working on a budget reduction exercise. And directors went back and scoured their budgets and began prioritizing in groups of 5% reductions of their budgets and what that might look like. In addition, they prioritize their capital projects. After the departments were done with the exercise of gathering the proposed reductions for up to 20%, and what I'm going to say is that we did reductions up to 20% not knowing what COVID-19 would really end up looking like and what sort of impact it might have on our revenues in the very end. But really, what's so great is that the 20% impact, it would not really be realized through this exercise. So, I just want to put that out there right now. But the directors, they all came together and shared what their reductions are and had an opportunity for fellow directors to talk about their proposed reductions and what those reductions might mean to other departments as well. Because we do work together, where, you know, we're not necessarily working in silos. And when we make reductions in one, we don't necessarily understand what that means for another department. It may mean that it will impact workload in another department as well. So, it was a great opportunity to talk amongst ourselves, provide, be provided feedback as to what those proposed reductions might look like. Administration then met and went over all of the proposals and provided an opportunity to the, to review them, to ask quest, additional questions, and then to make some recommendations on what proposals should be moved forward. The directors went back, looked at those recommended proposals, and made sure that we were thinking of unforeseen consequences of the items that were selected and to be able to have conversations about that. And then finally, a final draft of the reductions were created and sent out to two departments. And then we also began what is the creation of a communication plan. We wanted to make sure that as we formulated our plan, that we rolled it out in a way that was respectful to all members of the organization, from our staff-level employees, to our managers, to the unions, to the council. We wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to hear, hear what was going on in a meaningful and useful way. On Monday morning, an email went out that provided a high-level communication of what the plan was. In addition, there was a meeting held with the unions. And then this morning, the impacted staff were notified. So, those staff that are part of this plan were notified about the impact to their position, whether that be through a layoff or the need to transition to another role. And so, here we are today, taking the opportunity now. Departments have shared their department reductions with their employees, so they're aware of what reductions are happening within their unit. And so, today, I want to bring to you a summary, more of not necessarily a high-level summary, but a more detailed summary of what reductions are happening in each of the departments. And we'll walk through that a little bit as we go along. But before we get to that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the CARES Act. So, the federal government passed the CARES Act. And initially, it was for populations over $500,000, but the state is making this money available to cities with populations under $500,000. And this would equate to $30 per pop, multiplied by our population, which is going to be shy of $3.9 million that would be available to the city. And we are expecting to receive grant agreements sometime this week, hopefully by Friday. At least I was, we were told that it should be no later than Friday that we'll be receiving them. But then it comes the footwork to be able to get those to you. So, grant agreements will be coming to council soon for approval. The CARES Act does have limitations, though, on how that, those funds can be used. And clearly, they can be used for new costs directly associated with COVID-19, but they cannot be used for revenue loss or to address our potential revenue shortfall. And so, what you're going to find is if I walk you through the plan that's been created, the CARES Act is not included in here. When we bring forth the grant agreement to council, we'll also be bringing forth the mayor's recommendation on how we could utilize those funds. And her recommendation is to use $1 million for job training in small businesses, and the remaining would be used to be for reimbursement of COVID-19-related expenditures. So, when we start thinking about roles and responsibilities, I wanted to chat with you for a moment about the role of the city council. Because as a city's policymaker, your role is to adopt the, adopt an annual budget and to approve budget adjustment that would cause increases to expenditures within a fund. The mayor's role as a chief executive officer is to determine how to execute that adopted budget. She does have the option to be, to underspend the budget. And as you're going to find, as we go through this, most of what you're going to see in this budget reduction plan would fall under the authority of the mayor. We'll talk a little bit about some of the items that we'll need to bring forth to you as we roll out this plan. So, let's first start by talking about what is our potential revenue shortfall. Now, if you recall, when, when I chatted with you last, the primary focus was on the general fund. We do have some other funds that are impacted. But as part of this exercise, we're going to be focused really on those funds that have a significant tie to the general fund. So, we're actually focused more on, excuse me, the operating nature of these funds. So, for example, the street fund does receive subsidy from the general fund. It also receives BNO tax dollars, both of which, the BNO tax dollars, we know will be down, as well as the state-shared revenue, that fuel tax revenue that they receive is also expected to be reduced. We're expecting a potential shortfall in the street fund of $3.7 million. However, the street fund is used to also fund capital. And so, in the slides that you're going to see coming up, the street fund is seeing operating reductions of about $575,000. And we'll go into more detail of what that is. Also, we're expecting to see some reductions in youth teen fund by about $80,000, and the criminal justice fund at about $800,000. You couple that with the reduction and the shortfall in the general fund of $14.2 million, and we're up to a $15.7 million shortfall. When I met with you back in April, the projection on the shortfall was a smaller number, I believe, was about $10 million or just there under. But what that took into account is that we wouldn't be seeing very much reduction in our charges for services, fines and forfeitures, permit and licenses. But in fact, we are seeing bigger reductions in that than I had estimated at that original meeting. With that, we are beginning to now see the general fund at a potential $14.2 million shortfall. So, when addressing the shortfall, we wanted to take an approach that did, did not depend solely on departments making reductions. If we went out to departments and said, hey, you know, we've got this shortfall. You guys need to find cuts to be able to meet that. Those would be pretty significant and very damaging in nature to be able to do something like that. So, we looked at finding some citywide alternatives to be able to minimize the impact to the departments. And so, right now, we're currently looking at using the general fund, fund balance of $5 million. As you recall, the general fund currently has a fund balance target of an 18% fund balance, and we're above that at this point in time and actually have a $34 million fund balance at this moment. We were, had the year gone as planned, we would be ending the year with a $31 million fund balance. So, what this plan will do is use an additional 5 million of that fund balance, dropping that down to, sorry, I just lost the number that was in my head, about $26 million. In addition to, and, you know, when the 18% fund balance was established for the general fund, that was established as a rainy day fund. And if, if you think of today, I don't know of a rainier day to be able to utilize that money at this point. Bill?
Hey, Paula, did, you say it go from 31 million to 26, you say?
Yes.
What percentage is that, do you know?
I, I do, but I don't have it in front of me, and my screen is blocked. So, I will get that for you before we're done with this call. The other thing that we're looking at doing is using some of the non-departmental capital transfer reduction of $3.2 million. And the $3.2 million, really what that is, is it's transfers out to capital that would have been funded by BNO tax dollars. And we are anticipating seeing a reduction on our BNO tax dollars. So, the proportionate share of those capital reductions would equate to approximately $3.2 million. In addition, we'd like, we plan to use $1 million of the health and wellness funds, fund balance. The health and wellness fund has a $5.7 million fund balance. And according to policy, it's only required to have a $2 million fund balance, leaving in excess of $3.7 million. That has been pretty consistent for quite some time now. And so, this seems like an appropriate use of fund balance in the health and wellness fund because it, it in turn would help to be able to prevent the reduction of other positions throughout the city. And so, this leaves us with the department reductions. So, Bill, I want to go back to your question before I talk about department reductions. A $26 million fund balance, or $26 million fund balance would leave us with $25.6 million. But what I want to continue, what I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about is, really, what does that mean, though? Because when you start looking at a fund balance of $25 million during this time, we have to begin to look at the '21, '22 budget impacts. So, in order to ensure that we have the funding necessary and the balance necessary to move forward from period to period, this is hard to explain without a picture, I'm sorry. But as we look at the biennium, in order to ensure that, that we continue to carry enough fund balance and to be able to cover our expenditures, we want to leave a buffer in our fund balance to be able to maintain that. Because you may recall, we typically have a $2 million structural imbalance every single year that we're having to address. This is now the time I would be coming to you with the '21, '22 budget kickoff meetings. And this is the time we'd be saying, we have $2 million that we need to talk about. How do we want to address it? And this, this means we are actually having an opportunity to address that structural imbalance now, instead of going through this exercise one more time. The other thing that we need to, to be mindful of is we still do not know how long this pandemic is going to last and what it's going to look like. We don't know, as we start coming out of this stay-home order, what that's going to mean. Is there going to be another round of pandemic related to the COVID-19, requiring us to shut down again? How quickly are our revenues going to come back? We really are, we really have certain levels of uncertainty that we need to make sure that we leave enough in our fund balance to be able to address this so we do not have to go through this budget reduction exercise again. Because I will be the first to say it's very painful. Yes, Bill?
I'm hearing you correctly, Paula. So, so for the '21 and the '22 year biennium, we probably need, if everything kind of stated same, we're probably going to need another additional $4 million to balance the biennium for the '21, '22. Is that correct? Because you say $2 million structure balance per year. So, for '21, '22, we would need at least another 4 million, assuming everything stated same, we have no more big issue come about. That's correct?
Yeah, we're looking at 5 million on ongoing, but we certainly would need at least 4 million on ongoing.
Thank you.
Yes. In fact, that gets to the, back to our slide talking about the department impacts. And you can see that there's two, there are two tables here that talks about department reductions, ongoing and one time. So, ultimately, what those two slides mean is in 2020, departments would need to take reductions totaling $6.5 million. Of those reductions, 5 million of them would need to continue to carry forward. Hold on, I'm going to, let me go back because I'm skipping ahead. I hit the wrong button. What I wanted to say, sorry, I clicked before I was quite ready to be done. One of the things that I wanted to say about the department reductions is all departments participated in this exercise. And in general, the reduction, the percentage of reductions for, per department are fairly consistent. There isn't one department that is bearing the brunt of the reductions. And, you know, I want to go back to the fact that we're using some fund balance of both the general fund and the health and wellness fund and really, really state how much that is saving us from having to make some pretty deep cuts. And some of those cuts would likely require us to look at reductions in entire services altogether. So, we're going to be, in just a few minutes, we're going to be looking at the reductions that are taken in each of the departments. But I think before we get to that point, I wanted to provide a little perspective of what you're going to see in, with the numbers that we're looking at. So, what I've provided for you is what the 2020 general fund expenditure budget looks like by department. And so, as you can see, the police department makes up a good chunk of the general fund. And if you take police and parks, that's over half of the general fund. Then we have non-departmental. And non-departmental, I do want to say, is they are that, that, those transfers out, that's primarily made of transfers that are going out of the general fund into other funds. And many, money, much of that is established through ordinances or definitely through the budget process. And then you have the other funds that make up the other portion of the general fund. And before we get too deep into the reductions, I thought it would be important to talk about this, provide you with the summary of the impacts to employees. Our employees are our most valuable asset. And to have to see them walk out the door, it's really, really hard on everyone who is involved. And I know through this exercise, we worked diligently to be able to minimize the impact on actual people who are laid, are having to leave the city. If you look at the line that says layoffs or retirements, you'll see that there are 11 people who will be leaving our organization permanently. Down below, you're going to see a line that says temporary layoffs or reductions. And there are 23 people who are impacted by that. And I will get more into that when I hit the Parks Department to talk about that. But then, in addition, we have frozen a total of seven positions. And just as a definition of what it means to freeze a position, it means that we remove their budget, and they cannot fill it at this time. But we do not take the positions off the books because we consider them to be critical positions. And that way, during the mid-biennium budget cycle, we can look at revenues, or during the budget cycle, look at revenues, see if they're coming back and have further discussions. The top two items really are opportunities where we weren't, we, we were able to use vacant positions either to just completely eliminate, or somebody, a position would be eliminated that had a person in it, and they would, what we call bump, into another position. So, they may not be doing the same work, but they are, they are still employed at the city.
And Councilmember? A question on the vacant positions. So, those are very different than the positions that you're freezing because there's no, in most cases, there's no intention to fill those at a later date?
Yeah, those are intended, as we're creating the '21, '22 budget cycle, that we will take them off of our FTE count.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fincher, did you have a question on this slide?
I do. On the layoffs and retirements, were those just the timing that they happen to be, would have been coming up on retirement anyway, or is that a special early retirement plan?
We did not offer an early retirement plan, per se. There are some, some, one person who volunteered to retire because they could. There are other people who were just right up against retirement and were already planning to retire around this time or had already said they were wishing to retire.
Madam President?
The bulk of them are, are layoffs.
Yes, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the furloughs, now, it's not mandatory that they go the whole three months. If everything gets better, it could be two months, for example, for some.
Well, for the furloughs, and I may have to defer to Derek for further clarification on that, is my understanding that the budget dollars are going to be reduced. is my understanding that the budget dollars are going to be reduced. I don't know if they're planning on bringing them back. Derek, are you able to jump in on that?
Yeah, happy to do that. So recreation programs have to be planned in advance. And given the governor's order, it is highly unlikely that we'll be able to offer programs this summer. So that August 31st or September 30, September 1st date is when we'll look at, can we bring them back to start planning fall and winter programs? And there will be an impact on fall and, and winter because of the time that it takes to put programs together.
So most of those are definitely, the majority is in Parks Department?
They're all in the Parks Department.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That makes sense.
Yeah, sorry, when I showed the summary before I actually show all the thing, it spurs other conversation. Any other questions on this before I move to the next slide? I did, I did want to add one more, a few more comments before, actually, before I move from here. First off, I did want to let you know that the impacted employees were notified this morning. Those that are, those 11 individuals will be receiving one month's severance pay on, after their last day, and their last day will be set for July 1. This will keep them on medical insurance through the month of July. So for administration, in 2020, they're taking reductions of $235,000 and 210 of that will be ongoing. They will have a reduction of one FTE, and that would be the executive assistant who will be retiring. As part of their savings, they're also looking at taking, for 2020 only, taking 50% of the CDBG, of the community engagement coordinator, and charging that to the CDBG grant. It would also, for 2020, include the elimination of the resident survey by $30,000 and removal of some funding for the intern program for $30,000. And then, for some ongoing expenses, there is the council, the city council professional services that would have a reduction of $63,000. And you can see that I showed by division because technically, city council does roll into the mayor and council budget. And so you can see that the city council will also be recognizing some reductions in 2020 at $90,000 and $100,000 for 2021 and 2022. But what I want you to be mindful of is that part of the position that is being eliminated through retirement is funded out of the city council's budget. That combined with the $63,000 in reductions in the professional services, what is making up that variance? Or making up that $100,000 with just a couple miscellaneous line items as well. Any questions about administration? So the court, the court's taking a reduction of $220,000 in 2020 and $45,000 in 21, 22. In 2020, they're able to recognize some salary savings of $118,000, primarily because the court has been closed due to the stay-home order. So they're able to save about $58,000 in overtime. They do have a vacant probation officer position and have salaries of $50,000. And they will be moving a portion of the probation officer to DUI court grant. Beyond that, they will move forward with ongoing reductions of $45,000 from overtime and pro temp services. And I think I saw a question pop up on my screen. Council, Councilmember Cor.
I can't hear the question.
I don't think it's been asked yet.
Councilmember Cor, if you're having trouble with your microphone, you can probably use the chat feature and we can go ahead and read your question as well. Councilmember Fincher, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you very much. So I, my understanding is that when things resume, we will have a backlog in our court cases. Was that also considered in these?
Yes, they were. When, when actually things resume, there will be a backlog, but we're going to be restricted by the social distancing requirements, which is going to slow the process down a little bit in, in trying to deal with this. So it's still able to manage through these savings even with that in mind.
So let me see, Councilmember Cor was having trouble with her mic. She says, "Related to the previous slide, we had $70,000 as part of the budget adjustment last week. Is that also part of the reductions?"
That is a good question. And so I, unless administration knows off the top of their head, I'll have to look at that and I will see if I can get that answered.
So Paula, I can answer that question. I believe Councilmember Cor is referring to the quarterly budget amendment that was, went before the committee of the whole last week and is on the consent calendar this week. It added $60,000 for communications, largely in anticipation of running Proposition A this year, which looks unlikely. So that is being added to the budget and then was part of the budget for the purposes of applying the reduction target. So while that particular line item wasn't reduced by 60,000, it drove the need for the whole collection of line items to reduce. So it was, it was part of the equation.
And that, she says, thank you. So I think, I don't see any other hands raised. We can probably move on.
Right. So let's move on to economic and community development. Economic and community development is looking at $500,000 in reductions for 2020 and $575,000 in 21, 22. With that, they'll see three FTE reductions. One of them is a vacant term limited permit tech position. And then the other would be layoffs of a building inspector and a planner. In addition, they were able to recognize some salary savings, which equates to about $190,000 a year, where they have various positions, which will be allocated to the sound transit project. This year only, they're looking at reductions in some professional services, both for the planning unit and the rental housing and inspection program. And as you may recall from the last meeting, I think that we were just at, there was a conversation about an LTAC reallocation of $50,000 that would be utilized. And that will help to offset some of the costs within the general fund. And then the position reductions will save $335,000 ongoing. For finance, finance is taking reductions of $285,000 for each of the years. During this, you, you may recall earlier this year, you were so gracious and approved the department to have a BNO tax supervisor. And although I would love to have a BNO tax supervisor, that position is vacant and this, and the department has been without it since BNO tax has been here. So we are going to be eliminating that position. In addition, we have a central financial analyst position that a person was in that's eliminated and they bumped into a vacant position. And that, so there is nobody who would be going home from the loss of those two positions. The BNO tax supervisor will save $155,000 ongoing. The central financial analyst would save $122,000 and then some miscellaneous salary savings of $8,000. For human resources, they're looking at taking a 330, or excuse me, $350,000 reduction in 2020 and $165,000 in 21, 22. Please don't let that $350,000 be, be a sticker shock to you. Much of that is made up of a one-time allocation of the benefits group to the health and wellness fund. That will be just for this year. That is why that number is so large for the one year. I say that, but human resources will be losing one position through a layoff, and that's their administrative assistant. That will result in an $85,000 a year savings being moved forward. And then between supplies and services, they're looking at reductions of $80,000 a year. For information technology, for 2020, they're looking at a reduction of $495,000 in 2020 and then 650 in 2021 and 760 in 2022. I want to get into an explanation very quick before I talk about what those reductions are, about the line right below that where it says amounts to impacted funds. If you recall earlier in this slideshow, there were several funds that we are looking at right now, general fund, street fund, youth teen fund, and criminal justice fund. Those are the ones that are highly impacted by the decrease in our sales tax revenue and state shared revenues and other, and other revenues for that means. The IT department, unlike all the other departments, they are housed in what's called an internal service fund. So they are, they are caring for the entire city. And that includes, they're caring for people in our water department, our sewer department, general fund, you name it. So what happens is when they, when they, when they spend their budget, that is allocated out to all of the various funds. And so in our budget savings exercise here, what ends up happening is they save the general fund, street fund, and criminal justice fund, $340,000 in 2020, $445,000 in 21, and $520,000 in 2022. So that's why you're going to see two numbers related to theirs. As part of their reductions, they are looking at moving a contract developer into an IT project, taking the burden off of, off of their operating fund. And then in addition, they'll be making general operating expenditure reductions in each of the years, becoming progressively larger, as you'll notice. They go from $320,000 a year to $585 in 2022. The main reason for this is right now, IT is in the midst of six major business system replacements. And they are critical to, to the function of what we have going on. And it would be, it would not be prudent to, to begin reducing their 2020 expenditures any more than we did this year. But in turn, that means they're going to have to make up those reductions in the 21, 22 biennium. For the law department, they're looking at reductions of $205,000 in 2020 and $210,000 in 21, 22. They are seeing a reduction of 1.8 FTEs, one of which is a vacant position, and the other is a legal secretary who was, will be laid off. In addition to the ongoing savings they're going to recognize from those positions, they are also planning to cancel the remodel that they had already budgeted for, for in 2020 and use those dollars instead towards their operating expenses. So for the Parks Department, for the Parks Department, they're seeing total reductions of $1.65 million in 2020 and $1 million in 21, 22. In addition to that, they're seeing a reduction in FTEs of 5.52. And then, like we talked about earlier on that other slide, the temporary layoffs and furloughs that are going to affect 23 people, that's going to reduce their FTEs, meaning people are going to work reduced schedules, and I'll get into that in a moment, reducing their FTE by 10.81 in the short term, the next three months. In addition, parks is known for, our parks, parks, in order to manage their parks program, hire part-time people to come out and handle what needs to be done. And there, there is a loss of 175 opportunities for part-time employment during the summer. And just a few things before I get into what are those reductions look like. A few things that we want to be able to consider is that, especially in the times that we are today, parks recognizes and has safeguarded human services funding, so there are no reductions to human services. The parks maintenance budget has been fairly protected to ensure that we can continue to maintain the city's parks. One of the things that was done in recreation is instead of reducing a budget, there was actually an increase of $50,000 for funding in recreation. And that's for the recreation scholarships. Because right now, we have so many families who are unable to participate in the activities that are going on, that they would typically participate in because of COVID-19. And we want to, as soon as our programs reopen, make it readily available to families who are impacted by COVID-19 and provide them with scholarship monies so that, that they can participate into those programs. The other thing that's, that's impacted here is the recreation programs are going to be discontinued through August 31st. And that's what's tying there to the temporary layoffs and the furloughs. Without those programs, we don't need to have the, all the employees here on a full-time basis. There'll be three of the, I mean, excuse me, 23 people who will be looking at reducing their, their scheduled work time by 50%. Many of those, 20 of those are full-time employees who will be going down to 50% of full-time. We do have three employees who are part-time employees who will be going down 50% from that. Because we will not be fully staffed, that's going to be impacting how we can prepare for our fall and winter programs and events. And that is going to be due to clearly the furloughs that we're not having people there. I see a question. Councilmember Boyes?
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Paula, it is true that for the 23 people that's going to be furloughed, they will be eligible for the state and federal, what do we call it?
The shared worker?
Unemployment, I'm sorry, unemployment, right?
Yes. Yeah, and I think Ter, I don't know if Terri's on here and can speak to what they're eligible for. Because she could probably articulate that better than I can.
Hi, everyone. Yes, they will be on the shared work program, which makes them eligible for unemployment. Hi, everyone. Yes, they will be on the shared work program, which makes them eligible for unemployment. The regular weekly benefit amount for unemployment. With the 50% reduction to that amount. Plus on top of that, they will get the $600 in the, from the KIRZ.
That'll help somewhat, right? So that's kind of, that's good.
It does. Yeah, it certainly does. And the shared work program is actually, it's a pretty fabulous program that really does help the employees to have a reduction in hours.
Councilmember Michelle, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Council President Paula. So they will also be getting benefits as well during this time and accruing sick leave and vacation time as well. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I do have one more slide for parks as well. So if people are comfortable with me moving on, I'll go ahead and click on their second slide. So the parks department, they did see a reduction in positions. So the positions that are going to be eliminated are going to be the maintenance worker three, van driver, two program, parks program coordinators, a parks program assistant and a facility lead. Two of those positions are vacant, three of them, excuse me, three of the positions are vacant. Two of them are layoffs and one of them was an individual who was planning to retire. In addition to that, the parks department did do funding changes to some of their positions. They were able to move the parks coordinator, one of their parks coordinator to youth teen funding, a parks program coordinator to the King County Levy funding. And then in their facilities unit, they were able to take a portion of a couple of their positions and charge them to facilities lifecycle. By doing that, does put that more in line with how we treat many of our other capital projects, recognizing the full cost of managing those projects. So with the, some of the things to, I'd like to share with you about their reductions are in 2020 only, so this will only be affecting this year. They're going to be eliminating their summer programs, which is going to save about $450,000. In addition, their entire, pretty much their entire rec division, with exception to four individuals, will be going on this reduced 50% schedule. By doing so, and this will be for three months, and by doing so, this will save $280,000. They are able to save $230,000 by not filling those part-time positions that they would typically fill to help them through the summer season. And then again, in addition, we did increase funding for the recreation scholarships from, by $50,000 to $106,000. Ongoing with the position eliminations that you see there, they'll be saving $614,000 a year. So long as they are charging those position fund changes, they'll be seeing $320,000 in that. They're also looking at changing the annual programs guides. Instead of coming out three times a year, they're going to be coming out two times per year. And then in addition, they'll be reducing the spotlight series to six shows annually, which will save $30,000 a year. For the police department, they will be taking reductions of 2.15 million dollars in 2020 and almost $1.5 million in 21, 22. With that, they're going to see three reductions in FTEs as well as freezing seven positions. So if we look at the positions that are, that the three positions that are going away is going to be the R and D coordinator. Now that resulted in an employee bumping another employee, which resulted in a layoff. The evidence supervisor would be a layoff and a correction sergeant. For, it's a program correction sergeant that resulted in a reassignment, then a bump and a vacant, and then a bump into a vacant position. So there were a few employees that were impacted through, or at least two employees that were impacted through that. And then the positions that will be frozen will be the five police officers, the record specialist and the corrections officer. I did see a question. Do we have one out there?
Councilmember Michelle.
Yes, Paula, what is R and D coordinator?
I will say it's research and development, but I keep seeing it just like that. So I don't, I will have to, if I'm wrong, can someone chime in?
Hi, Chief Padilla here. That is correct. It's our research and development coordinator.
Councilmember voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Talk about police in Pacific, but it probably apply to everybody. So as people leave and retire or move on, are we allowed to backfill the position? In Pacific Police, but of course it applies to everybody.
So you're talking about the ones in retirement, going into retirement?
Oh, we have this budget in place now, so everybody locked in. So let's say next year we get two police officers who retire, are we allowed to backfill the position?
Yeah, if the two police officers retire, yes, you can certainly fill those positions. What it'll mean is we'll need to leave five positions vacant at any one time in order to meet our budget objective.
I'm assuming that applies to the other organization as well, too. Like Madam Mayor got her hands up, I guess.
Yeah, well, in the freeze category, the freeze only applied to the police department.
But I'm saying, but other departments too, if you have people say.
Yeah, but council, councilmember voice, I think I know what you're getting at. So we've not done a citywide hiring freeze, but we have requested that every vacancy that comes open, go through a very specific review to determine filling it. So it's not just going to be, so all citywide, all of those things go through a process.
Okay, answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Thomas. Did anyone else have a question? Sorry, I didn't. I thought I heard councilmember Thomas. All right, let's go ahead and go on and then see the other.
Okay, there we go. Something happened there. So Paula, what's going on at the golf course? I may be a little earlier on this one, but is there, what kind of reductions or movement is taking place there? Anything?
You know, Julie volunteered to speak to that, so I am going to reach out to her if she wouldn't mind jumping on.
Yep. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council President, councilmembers. Riverbend Golf Course, believe it or not, is actually doing okay now that they're officially open. They were actually forecasted originally to take a loss this year because of renovations with the driving range that was added by the loss of about a month and a half of golf. However, with all the moves we've made with the business plan, we have officially paid off the city's, our loan with the city on the inter-fund loan of 4.2 million. We've created an additional 500,000 fund balance that's outside or a cash reserve rainy day balance that's outside of our fund balance. And we have access for admission tax and so on. So the loss that we're experiencing in 2020, we can absorb all 100% within our own fund with very minimal impact. So kudos to the staff out there for following through with a lot of business strategy that's able to pull them out of this one. And then in 2021, we will have the full driving range back, which is the first year we roll into the black.
Councilmember voice.
If I follow up, so what I guess I'm asking is, so there are no reductions or freezes taking place in the golf course?
No, there are not.
Good job, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a follow-up on the question. Julie, the restaurant, are we okay? Are they doing okay? Are they going to survive everything that's going on?
So far, so good. They're honestly an incredible partner, as I knew they would out there. They had, the second we were allowed to reopen with golf, they then remobilized, not their restaurant space yet, but their food service for order as well as their drink carts driving around the course. So they're doing really well and strong and we're all just waiting to be able to reopen at some degree that restaurant. So so far, so good.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, I think we're good, Paula. All right. Did we finish with police? I can't remember. Now we've done. Oh, so some of the notable reductions, they did do a reduction in medical for just this year only at $54,000. For the police department, they are planning to use some of the school zone camera fund balance. Right now, there's a $1.8 million fund balance. Yes, we anticipate the revenues to come in below what is budgeted. However, our expenditures were also budgeted below what we were expecting in revenue, which is great. But then we do have $1.8 million in fund balance to be able to navigate this. So, so the use of school zone camera fund balance for $623,000, also reducing the Yakima jail housing by 146,000. And that would be in addition to those ongoing expenses that they'll have for the positions that are either frozen or eliminated.
Paula, Councilmember Core has a question. Can you please explain the jail medical reduction? What is that?
Hi, Chief. Would you mind taking that?
I'd love to take that. Thank you. So we contract for the jail services provided to our inmates and it's a very good program. Where we are making the cuts to save money is in terms of the hours that we actually staff nursing positions at the jail. In recent years, we bumped up the staffing so that it almost encompassed the entire 24 hours in a day. We, to save money, we will look at reducing that down. Still the same level of service, just maybe not around the clock like it is now. And if events do arise where medical treatment is necessary, we will do everything we can to transport them and get them the necessary care. So just a reduction in the hours that we provide onsite medical services.
Okay, so she has a follow-up question. This doesn't impact inmates, especially during the COVID-19 time?
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We are moving on to our last department and this is Public Works. Public Works is, they're looking at reductions of $575,000 in each of the years that are presented here. There will be two FTE reductions. One is an engineer three, which is currently vacant. And the other is the public engagement coordinator who will be laid off. In addition, they were able to recognize savings by shifting some of the workers, as you can see, field supervisor, engineer supervisor, maintenance workers into either the solid waste service fee to be covered by the solid waste service fee or by the utility tax. Those, the ones that are in the utility tax, those are project funded. So it's ultimately shifting those workers into a project to be able to to keep them and recognize the operating fund savings. And then finally, you're going to see that there'll be ongoing, this is going to just be continual and ongoing. So this will be a $575,000 a year recognition and savings. And finally, so some next steps. Departments are going to be asked to adopt this proposed, or adopt the proposed budget reduction plan as we've outlined here. And what you're going to see coming forward to you is during part of, or excuse me, as part of a quarterly budget adjustment, you're going to see some of the items here that are going to require your approval in order to adjust the budget. And some examples of this, in order to allocate our costs to the health and wellness fund, we do need to put the salaries and benefits into the health and wellness fund. So that would increase that fund's expenditure budget by about $232,000. In addition, we'll be allocating one of those positions from Public Works to the solid waste fund. And so that would be an increase of $64,000 in their expenditure budget. And then you'll see a transfer out from the school zone camera for 100,000. So you recall, we talked about using 623,000 of fund balance. The bulk of that can stay right in that school zone fund, but 100,000 would be shifted to the general fund. The, and once that's done, part of my role is going to be able to help ensure that we're able to comply with the plan. So we're going to continue to monitor with departments to ensure that we're sticking to what, what we're supposed to be doing as part of this with our reductions. And then I'm going to be continuing to monitor the revenue streams moving forward to, just to account for any changes that could potentially arise. And so that is what I had for my presentation. Do you guys have additional questions now that you've kind of walked through the whole thing?
Thank you, Paula. Hang on, I have a question here from Councilmember Core. What will be the $100,000 general, what will the 100K general fund be used for? And how will it impact the school zone camera fund?
So the $100,000 is going to be transferred into the general fund to offset some expenditures from the police department. So it's in order to help, as part of the police department's reduction, we're just transferring that excess fund balance over to general fund to cover those costs, so we did not have to cut them. The school zone camera, again, it has a fund balance of 1.8 million dollars right now. We are anticipating revenues to come in below expectations, but we also budgeted expenditures below what we were expecting revenue. So that's a positive right there. We willing to eat into fund balance, there is no doubt about it. But we are still going to have ample fund balance in the school zone camera fund after this year. Thank you, Councilmember Core. Did you have any other questions? All right, thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Actually, Sad wanted his question, was my question, so I'll back out.
All right, we will move on to Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Paula for this presentation and the mayor and all the department heads. I know that this has been a really difficult day and I just want to let our employees know how difficult this is and how much we value their hard work and their dedication to the community. And these furloughs and layoffs impact not only those individuals, but also their families and their coworkers and our residents. And I know, especially when it comes to the Park and Recreation Department and normal circumstances, those staff interact with people every day and I know they make positive impacts on thousands of people they work with. And so I just, I want them all to know that I believe that these recreation services are necessary for Kent and that builds a strong and healthy community. And so I hope that we can resume, you know, later when we're allowed to and that we have the money, our recreation services and to get these employees back to work.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember voice.
Well, just kudos, what Councilman Michelle just got to talking about. You know, I just, I keep thinking about, you know, just how fortunate we are to have a fund balance greater than even what our anticipated allocated, what it should be. And I just think about, if we didn't have that, we almost had to shut the city down. So I just think, it just goes to show us as council member, right? As we look at things, we really need to be looking at, you know. As we look at things, we really need to be looking at, you know, four, five, and six years down the road, because we just never know what's gonna happen, right? And I'm just fortunate that we were able to ease the blow and allow the mayor and Derek to be able to use that balance to kind of offset, you know, some of the pain that, or what we went through. So I'm just, just something we need to keep in mind. We need to make sure we're always looking ahead. And I'm so happy that as we move forward, one good thing about it, we're not heavily reliant on retail, like, you know, somebody like Sea-Tac and to call us some other places. So that's another good thing that we can look forward to as we move forward, that our warehouse may get utilized even more so. So I just wanted to say, hey, good job, team. I know it wasn't an easy thing to do, but I feel really good about the adjustment and us moving forward. Only we can hope for that there never be a COVID-19 or COVID-20, you know, that, because if it do, it's really gonna be even painful. Let's pray that that'll come about again. So, good job, team.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Just looking at some of the comments coming through from council members. Councilmember Core also says, thank you, Paula, thank you, Mayor Ralph and Derek and everyone involved. Brenda also agrees with all the comments. And I just want to say, Paula, you have done an amazing job with your presentations, making them so that we can understand things clearly. And I would imagine that people that are out there watching this on Facebook Live or the YouTube channel will feel the same way. Really tough decisions being made. We've always talked about having to make those decisions that are really hard, and this is one that we probably never expected to make. And I want to thank the mayor for all she's done to Derek, to all the department directors, because they had to make all of these decisions and kind of come up with these plans in a very short amount of time. So hopefully, we'll be back up and running soon, and things will get back to normal before we know it. But just all the sentiments that are out there, thanking everyone for all of their hard work. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Ralph.
Thank you, Council President. I think you summed that up perfectly. I, I have a lot of thank yous in this process, and a lot of just want to express how, how sad it is that we are saying goodbye to members of our city family today. It is never an easy conversation. I am extremely grateful for our rec team and their willingness to work through this. And Councilmember Michelle, those programs are coming back. That's not even a question. We just need to wait for the governor to, to get us to that point. So appreciate your support there. And Councilmember Boyce, you talked about that fund balance. So I will tell you the, the quote that I keep using, and, and I'm borrowing it from Derek Matheson, is that, you know, we have a rainy day fund for a reason, and right now it's pouring. And if we did not have that fund balance, if council would not have set that, that level where, where we did, you know, a few years back, and if current councils weren't willing to stick to that, it would have devastated the city. There would be no way that we would get through this without, you know, I mean, if you straight math, it's like a hundred employees. So I am grateful to the council for, for sticking to that policy, to previous councils for putting it there, and want to say to all of our employees how much I value them, and how grateful I am for the work that they do every single day. And I'm so sorry to those that got that bad news today. There's just, is no, there's no way around how, how hard that is for them, and how hard it is for us to have to be able to deliver that. So thank you to all the department heads for the work that they've done over the last couple of weeks. This has been, it's been a difficult exercise because there, there's, there's faces and families attached to every single one of those numbers that Paula presented. And I could not be more grateful for the team and all the work that they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't see any other hands raised. Did anyone else have any other comments they'd like to make?
Just real quick, that, Paul, in this year, I'll, or we get a copy this year, Madam President.
Yes, Paula, did you hear that? If we could get a copy of the presentation, that would be great. Yeah, absolutely. I'll send that out right after this meeting. Thank you so much. All right, so it looks.
Madam President.
Councilmember Thomas.
Councilmember President, thank you very much. You know, Paula, I really do appreciate this particularly visual presentation. I thought it was very well done. And to reiterate some of the other comments, I talked to Derek Matheson this morning about how well that we have prepared ourselves for such an emergency as this, as opposed to, say, oh eight and oh nine. And I was present through that, and it was pretty ugly. And we didn't have the reserve built up, and we'd been warned that we should have, but we didn't. But this council and the previous one, under the leadership of not only yourself, Tony, but also Bill Boyce, Derek, the mayor, good job, kudos. I know we're not out of the woods yet, but my gosh, it could have been so much worse. And you hate to see any employees let go, but there's probably at a minimum, I would say, that you've done here, and good job, because I just think of how much worse it could have been. And I really want to thank you and your leadership. Thank you, everybody here. This is, well, that's enough said, I guess.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher.
Madam President, well, Councilmember Thomas, we're just gonna add a little bit more on to that. You know, with that fund balance being one of our saving graces, we have, let's look at some of our neighboring cities and what they're going through and the number of layoffs. So I'm very thankful that the council has done this, and hopefully, future councils will also remember this and keep that fund balance built up. Thank you very much, and thank you to all of our employees, the ones who had to make some of these decisions. Thank you for working together because of the consideration and teamwork, looking at what one department needs, and not, not trying to stay in a silo, looking at only what one, what a single department needed, but what was going to be best for the city in a hard situation. So thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? All right, I think that that will end our workshop. Thank you so much, Paula. And we look forward to seeing everyone back at seven for the council meeting.